Stark County Commission meeting for Wednesday, December 28, 2022. To order, first of all, do the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with every right and justice for all.
Next, next you have the agenda. Is there anything we need to add or change on the agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I've moved to approve the agenda as submitted.
Okay, have a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Have a second. All in favor? Steve, aye? Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Next, counts payable. Is there any questions on the counts payable?
I'd just like to make a comment, Chairman. There was a late add for the Southwest Correction Facility. Initially, the, the early numbers that I got was, it was 152,000, which is our monthly bill at the jail, which was, but then there was a late add for an additional $411,000. And that is actually... There was a mill levy from 2022 that was never forwarded or given to the jail. And additionally, that was for, I believe that was 80, or 73,000. And then there was an additional $185,000 from year 2021 that was not given to the, to the jail board. So this is kind of a catch-up, the 411,000.
Okay.
You said the first one was 70,000, the second one was 100,000?
The, the first one, that was the, actually, the mill levy was 73,000. And it's our portion of the mill levy. And then the, the additional was the 185,000, and that was from 2021.
And that, that comes to 400,000?
That comes to the 258.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yes, comes to the 258, and then, yeah, the, the 152. Yeah.
So, so there was a little bit of confusion because in, in January, I had just gave them a rather large check in December, which was actually catching up from it not being paid the previous January. And I thought that was for this coming year. But in January, when she sent over the amount, because it was a very similar amount to the previous year, I thought we had already paid that, and we didn't. And that was for the 180, like 185,000. And so I wanted to make sure, I did budget for it, and it's in the 2022 budget. But the checks weren't sent out. I budgeted up to 400,000. But I actually, and you'll look on your budget variance sheet, I actually originally budgeted it out of the, and it's normally been budgeted for out of the capital improve, um, capital improvements account. But I actually moved it over and to the jail capital projects account. And so that, the, our next bill that we'll get is next month, and we can pay that right away. But it's, so it is budgeted for, it just wasn't paid until late.
This brings us off, there's no other past dues?
Well, there were a year prior, so we get our bill in January for 2022 that, that all the counties owe additionally. Yep.
Any other questions, the counts payable? If not, I'll look for a motion to approve the counts payable.
So moved.
Motion second. Roll call vote. Commissioner Messer?
Aye.
Commissioner Marsh? Commissioner White?
Aye.
Commissioner Claris?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye, motion carries. Next, do you have a Dennis Richard Platt, the right-of-way vacation? I guess Mr. Prosev here will present that.
Commissioner? Is this thing on? Here we go. Bob Prosev, Interstate Engineering, on behalf of Dennis Richard. The commission to consider the plat, a partial plat vacation and right-of-way vacation for the, for subdivision in the Southeast Quarter, Section 29, 13999. Dennis would like to revert lots five, six, and seven, and the right-of-way immediately to the west of these lots to vacate and eventually rezone this to ag so he can farm it as a contiguous field. This is a little bit of uncharted ground. Has worked with Amanda on, on the procedure to present this so the commission can make their decision. We did a, a registered mail. We did it the first time. Got two responses. There, there are five owners that are affected by this. The first mailing, two responded, one for, one against. I believe Karen did, you, you gave the commissioners this sheet right here. Thank you. So, in my mind, okay, one for, one against. So I decided to do another mailing. The second mailing went out, and one was in favor. And two never responded twice. So I, I do believe we made a, a good due diligence effort to contact these people for their opinion. So in that aspect of the ownership of this area, two are for, two are against. So with that, the, I, I know Stephen has had some concerns about, about this, and I'm sure that the commissioners have some questions for me also.
So, Mr. Prosev, I guess the first question I have would be formality, whether or not we can do this without having a public hearing, the vacation of an easement. So that would be a technical question. If we can, then we can proceed with other questions, because I do have some there.
So, like Mr. Prosev said, we're kind of in uncharted territory with these vacations of plots. There isn't really, at least for counties, a set procedure. So we're following what the, essentially is the procedure for municipalities, which Mr. Prosev has done, sending out those letters. I think to be on the safe side, though, because there are some individuals against it, that the county should have a public hearing, just so that anyone who wants to come up to the commission and explain what the reason is that they are against vacating it can explain to you guys, and then you can answer any questions. But I think having Mr. Prosev here to at least explain and give you a heads-up of what they are looking at is, is totally appropriate for today.
Okay, thank you. So it looks like to me that there are three improved lots out of the six that are not owned by Mr. Richard? Or is there a fourth? Is that, so I, I see Stark Energy owns one. Looks like the lot two, maybe? Or am I off on that one, Bob?
Yes. From lot nine is, was owned by Dennis's nephew, Ben Richard. He had a welding business there, and he passed away. Another person has bought that, and that individual is interested in buying lot eight.
Okay.
From what I'm understanding, Mr. Wolf has lot four. And, and then there's, I believe, lots one and two are sold, but I believe lot three is still owned by Dennis. So that, that would stay unvacated, because it would, it would be kind of a hassle to farm.
Yeah, yeah, got it. So I understand the motivation to want to farm this on a contiguous basis, those three lots that may or may not have any appetite for marketing. What would be the, what's his, the logic? Could he farm the three lots, leave the roadway easement in place, and then farm his adjacent 119-acre field?
I suppose he could do that, but in visiting with Dennis, he would prefer just to, you know how equipment is so large nowadays? He just preferred to just...
And so the, the unimproved, improved roadway for those three lots would be just then kind of tore up and fenced off? Or not necessarily fenced off, but basically tore up, so it'd be one contiguous field, like you mentioned?
Yeah, the road would, would be reclaimed and then reverted back to a farming status.
So I know in some of these other areas, we have these rules in and outs in case there was an emergency. How would this apply?
Well, this is quite a wide right-of-way. It's 80-foot of right-of-way. Generally, there is a, some sort of cul-de-sac or turnaround area. But at an, at an 80-foot right-of-way, it's a pretty large right-of-way.
Okay.
That might be somewhat a consideration that, one of the stipulations that the commission may attach to this if it goes any further.
Bob, what, Mr. Wolf, he's in lot four, correct?
Correct.
And what is he currently using? Is that industrial? Does he have a shop there, or what's, what's he using it for currently?
Currently, from what I'm, when I drive by, it looks like he's just using it for storage.
It's not a truck shop, or he needs?
No.
Okay, or something like that?
Mr. Wolf is, you know, he, he's just recently retired, and, you know, he had a trucking business, and he worked for construct, contractors. So, you know, he's, he messes around with, with equipment.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Second, instead, then the public hearing would have to be set for our next meeting, then? Is that correct, or?
I think that'll be fine, yeah.
Okay, so...
It would be the next meeting?
Yeah, there, February, I guess that's...
You mean like the one January 7th?
I should, January, yeah.
Notice requirements, though.
If, if I could beg mercy, I'm going to be out of state.
Yeah.
So February would be probably a better... This isn't a hurry. This isn't something that needs to be taken care of tomorrow, so...
So you'd rather have it on February, our February meeting, then, right?
At, at least then I could, I could address any concerns that people may, if they're for it, against it, whatever. I could speak on a technical aspect of it.
Okay.
One last thing, lot eight and, lot eight and nine? What's that use? I, I don't remember what you said that week. Lot nine, currently, there's a welding shop there, a, a structure. And the, the individual that owns nine is, is interested in eight. So it would, that lot eight and nine would have the same landowner in the very, in the near future.
That's how it was previously, right?
I believe so.
When the welding shop was operational?
Mr. Chairman, I'd have a question. So, Bob, with them lots, so the road would come in on one end, and then the middle would be cut out, and the road would come in from the south? Because that road does go all the way through.
Right.
So you'd have a road coming in, and it'd be chopped off, and you'd have another road from the other end, and then there'd be a chunk in the middle missing?
Yes.
But there's other accesses to, to that property other than going down that road?
Yes and no. It's a fronting Highway 85, and North Dakota DOT is very stingy on giving approaches. So I, I wouldn't count on access off of Highway 85.
Because that, I mean, to me, that's a deal breaker right there, is people having access to their property.
Yeah, they have access from the west, but like, like Al's concerned about not, not going through.
Right.
And, and I believe Commissioner Messer mentioned about the width of the right-of-way. You know, if this was considered, that might be one of the stipulations that the commission could attach. This is some sort of turnaround area. That's if, if, if the commission okay's this.
I'd have a question for Al. Is this actually a road that gets some maintenance from you, or is it under your...
We do not, we do not maintain it.
Okay, snow removal or anything like that? Okay.
But I guess with that, a lot of, a lot of these things can be addressed at the public hearing.
Any other questions? I guess we'll move forward then with this, a public hearing then, in our February meeting, then? Regular meeting?
See you in February, enjoy. Phoenix.
I'll come back sunburnt. Thank you.
Okay. Next, our agenda is liquor and beer license for St. Pius. And that, you got their application in? Look for a motion to approve or deny this request?
There's two applications here, one's for $50, one's for $100?
Yep, one's for beer and one's for liquor, yes.
Why move, we accept them?
The motion to accept, I have a second.
I'll second.
Have a second. Roll call vote. Commissioner Mahersh?
Aye.
Commissioner Messer?
Aye.
Commissioner Claris?
Aye.
Commissioner White?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Next, we have Elder Care 2023 Distribution. Do you have a comment on that, Richard?
Yeah, yeah, so I think while back here, well, it would have been November, I had sent you all the commission some information on kind of how the Southwest District Health Elder Care Mill Levees work. And then, of course, they have their own, you know, council on aging. And then Southwest District Health has another separate budget. And in order, after speaking with Colleen, in order to get, so the money that we gave them in 20, at the beginning of 2022, they used to get caught up more so from 2021. And so in order for us to further catch that gap for 2022, she told me kind of where they're at. She's going to get the gapage for 2022 covered, asking through some other counties and cities. But for 2023, so that they are covered for their full budget for 2023, they still need an additional $55,500. And that would completely cover them for 2023, and they wouldn't need anything additional. And they'd be going into 2023 in the green, so into 2024, not in the red. And so we wouldn't be catching them up in 2024. So what I'm looking for the commission is if you would be able to use some of our ARPA or CARES Act funding to cover the 55,500 shortage for 2023. My other idea was we could, you know, we do have our state aid distribution. We could up the state aid distribution to cover what they would need for 2023. But since it's just kind of more of a one-time thing, I think it would make more sense just to use ARPA or CARES Act funding. And then this is their budget, which you can, well, their information that they send over, so you can kind of see where it's at. Elder Care, you know, had requested additional funds, and they explained that it was due to the extreme increase in food supplies, staff salaries, benefits, fuel, just inflation in general. And they do get mill levy money, but the thing is, is that Southwest District Health gets the first portion, and then Elder Care gets basically what's left of that mill. And then, you know, we, we have to cover, help cover their gapage in between. So because Southwest District Health needed more to get them caught up, it took away from what Elder Care needed. And so I'm just trying to get them both even and not in the red for 2023.
Do we have any questions?
Yeah, Karen, a couple of questions. So Southwest District Health is funded by eight counties?
Yes.
By one mill per county?
No.
No?
So I actually take all of the values from all of the eight counties, and I plug in the amount of money that Southwest District Health is requesting. And then I determine what the mill levy will be. Usually, I think this year it was like 3.65. And then all the counties levy that 3.65, because I use their values to determine that. This part of Southwest District Health is what Southwest District Health requests from the Stark County Council on Aging, which is who gets our one mill for our elder, elder...
Senior citizens.
Senior citizens mills, excuse me, yes. So Stark County Council on Aging is the one that gets our senior citizen one mill dollar amount. And then Southwest District Health and Elder Care request from the, from the, that Stark County Council on Aging, the dollar amount that they need.
Okay. So the senior citizens, the one mill, and then this, that one mill is split between Stark County Council on Aging?
Stark County Council on Aging gets the full mill.
Full mill.
And then they determine, then they distribute it between Southwest District Health and Elder Care.
Got it.
Yep.
And Elder Care only serves citizens of Stark County?
No, they do have, Elder Care does deliver mills to other counties. If, if you look, it's portioned out by, by our counties specifically. So like, they'll tell us what portion of the people they serve are Stark County residents. It just so happens that the majority are, are Stark County.
Sure.
Yeah. But they do get money to cover their overall budget from the other counties that they also serve.
And that was the point.
And cities. Yeah.
Any other questions? I'll have to look for a motion to, on this matter, to guess, where, where are we going to take the funds from?
Well, just to, under a discussion point, if it's a one-time infusion, I'm okay with it being, coming out of the ARPA or CARES money. If this, you know, I know they will be whole on January 1 if we fund this. I just want to make sure that if we're going to be doing this and be looked at, or look to do this in the future, then I would discourage it coming from ARPA, because then that ARPA money's going to go away at some point, and then all of a sudden, we're going to be surprised by that. So that's my only comment now.
Where were they at last year in 2021? Were they in the black?
So they, they were not in the good. And so what happened was, is when they received the ARPA money that we gave them in 2022, that dug them out of that hole that they were already in from 2021. And so it wasn't, they weren't able to use it for their 2022 budget, because the majority went to dig them out of where they were at. And so in 2023, if there, it's kind of like the same process. So this 55,500 that they are asking for will cover any shortages that they have in 2023. And so we're not digging them out of the hole in 2024. We're basically like, every year, they slowly got, you know, a couple thousand dollars. They slowly got behind, and then they started serving a whole bunch of people during COVID and everything else. And they just have a lot more people that use the service. And then now, because of inflation, people are, have the option of donating $5 when they receive a mill, but they're not getting the donations that they used to get, because people need money for other things. And so that's kind of why, why they're winding up in this issue. And so this will cover them through 2023, and then 2024, they're not trying to catch up from 2023.
Do we know how, I'm sorry. Do we know how many meals a day they're serving?
Um, I...
12, 1250, it looks like.
I had that list, didn't I? Did I put that in there?
In one of those forms, it says 1250, and the other one, it says 1602.
1250 might just be Stark County.
Okay.
Yep. Oh, here we go. So in 2023, they estimate, see, they do it by region. And so, and then they break it out by county to, so that they can cover, you know, separate the cost out. Like, that's their total for their services, home-delivered mills for all Region 8. And then they're telling you how many Stark County units they delivered in 2021, which was 34,407, just for Stark County.
So their budget, the money they get depends on how much Southwest District Health takes before they can have any of theirs? Which is sort of a...
Yeah, it, I mean, Southwest District Health, it, it also had, had some things come up with inflation and stuff like that, too. So they asked for more than they normally do from the Stark County Council on Aging, but they get first priority.
Right. And I'm just saying that the next year, inflation's going to come along, they're going to take more, and we're going to be sitting in the same spot next year.
Well, Southwest District Health will prob, as far as I know, will only need their 50,000 next year, because they're going to have to up their budget spreadage through all of the counties instead of just asking for Stark County Council on Aging.
But I'm, this just goes back to what Neil said. I mean, is this going to be a one-time thing, or does it, we need to be prepared for this on a yearly thing?
Because we have other agencies, too, who potentially could fall under this same scenario, so... I guess, do you have any other questions? I'd, I'd make a motion. I'd make a motion that we fund the 55,500 through the CARES Act funding. We have that money left, since COVID is kind of the source of... funding. We have that money left, since COVID is kind of the source of this dilemma. And that's, that's my motion.
A motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
A second. Any other discussion? Roll call vote, Commissioner Masser.
Aye.
Commissioner Marsh.
Aye.
Commissioner White.
Aye.
Commissioner Claris.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Next, move on to the two thousand twenty-two budget amendments. And order to Richard, you want to?
Okay, so I kind of put this together. The, I didn't include every single account, because you guys have the fund balances that I sent out. This is just to show the ones that had actual expenses that we are directly dealing with. In your, obviously, your original budget line, you can see that was the original budget in twenty twenty-two. The budget amendments is the ones that need amending. So those are the ones that are over the original budget. And then the amended budget is going to match with your actual, once we amend that over. Well, it won't matter, your actual is what was actually spent. I'm sorry, your amended budget will stay the same if it didn't move from the original budget, excuse me. And then if you see amounts in the under-budget dollar variance, that just is giving you the amounts that, you know, a lot of them were under. We did have a couple special things. So obviously, Commissioner Claris brought up the Southwest multi-corrections. I had that budgeted under the capital, it has been previously paid out under the capital improvements account. I don't really think that that's a capital improvement. So I did move that over to the jail capital projects account to come out of there, even though I moved that full amount over, that only made that budget over eight thousand two hundred and twenty-five dollars and fifty-two cents. So it really didn't make a significant budget difference. It just, we just didn't take as much out of capital improvement. The other thing to note is under weed control, we do have to amend their budget by that dollar amount, but I can tell you that that's because we are now paying for weeds benefits under the general. But after speaking with Lana, we decided to keep track of it separately, so their stuff still comes out of that fund number. And so, and I fixed that on the twenty twenty-three budget. But you'll see, for the twenty twenty-two budget, that's the dollar amount. Basically, that's anything they were over for benefits. And then Stark County Victim Witness did hire a part-time employee, and so their budget, that thirty-five thousand four oh one oh three is what their budget is over for twenty twenty-two. And then, of course, we have COVID. Now, something to note with the COVID, if you see, there's CARES, ARPA, and tribal, because that's the total of all of them. They are tracked separately, but they're all under that six zero four four fun number. Tribal is something different. It was a grant that, a federal grant that I applied for, and we did get fifty thousand of that here in December, and we'll get fifty more thousand in the next couple of months. So that's why that's also on there. Oh, lastly, the change in CDs, I forgot about that, sorry. Last year, we had six million seven hundred and fifty thousand in CDs. A million of those were actually separately, they were county parks. So we did do a twenty-seven ten fund for county park special projects, so that way, we could put that million dollars in there. It's not in our CDs, not in our general fund, and it has a purpose, and, and it's designated for the stuff with the county park special projects. So that's what that county park special projects line is. And then also, if Lisa receives any dollar amounts or anything like that, contributions for the fairgrounds, it can go in there, and it can be tracked, because it's part of that same project. So that's everything I have.
Kate, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I would make a motion that account twenty-one fifty highway tax distribution be amended by four million nine hundred fifty-two thousand two ninety-five point fifty-six.
Okay, we have a motion, do I have a second?
A second.
A second. Any other discussion? Roll call vote, Commissioner Masser.
Aye.
Commissioner White.
Aye.
Commissioner Marsh.
Aye.
Commissioner Claris.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries.
And Karen, you want to do these all individually, correct?
Yep, all the amendments individually.
So I would move under account number twenty-seven twenty jails and capital projects, we amend that budget by eight thousand two hundred and twenty-five dollars and fifty-two cents.
Motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second, any other discussion? Roll call vote, Commissioner Masser.
Aye.
Commissioner White.
Aye.
Commissioner Marsh.
Aye.
Commissioner Claris.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, under account number twenty-nine seventy, weed control, I would move that we do a budget amendment in the amount of eleven thousand one hundred twenty-nine dollars and twenty-four cents.
You have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Have a second. Any discussion? Not, roll call vote, Commissioner Masser.
Aye.
Commissioner Claris.
Aye.
Commissioner Marsh.
Aye.
Commissioner White.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, under account number six oh one four, security reimbursement, I would move we do a budget amendment in the amount of three hundred nine dollars and seventy cents.
You have a motion, do I have a second?
Aye.
Have a second. Any discussion? Roll call vote, Commissioner Masser.
Aye.
Commissioner White.
Aye.
Commissioner Marsh.
Aye.
Commissioner Claris.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, under account number six oh one eight, Stark County Victim Witness, excuse me, I make a motion that we amend that budget by thirty-five thousand four hundred one dollars and three cents.
You have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Have a second. Any other discussion? Roll call vote, Commissioner Masser.
Aye.
Commissioner Claris.
Aye.
Commissioner Marsh.
Aye.
Commissioner White.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, under account six oh four four, the CARES, ARPA, and tribal account, I move for a budget amendment in the amount of one hundred sixty-six thousand four hundred forty-six dollars and eighty-four cents.
You have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
A second. Any discussion? Roll call vote, Commissioner Masser.
Aye.
Commissioner White.
Aye.
Commissioner Marsh.
Aye.
Commissioner Claris.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Is there anything else we need to amend?
No more amendments, we just have some transfers.
So we need to transfer the fifty thousand from the general fund to the, which one is six oh eight oh?
The, the six zero eight zero is the, where did I put the wrong? Oh, I'm sorry, it's six zero one eight, I apologize, Stark County Victim Witness.
Okay, so I would move to transfer fifty thousand from the general fund to the six oh one eight Stark County Victim Witness Fund.
You have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second. Any other discussion? Roll call vote, Commissioner Masser.
Aye.
Commissioner White.
Aye.
Commissioner Marsh.
Aye.
Commissioner Claris.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries.
And so we're zeroing out the Farm and the Market Road, is basically what we're doing, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so I would move that the, we transfer from twenty-one ten Farm and the Market to twenty-one twenty, the unorganized road and bridge, the remaining balance of fifty-five thousand one hundred sixty dollars and thirty-two cents.
You have a motion, do I have a second?
A second.
Have a second. Any discussion? Roll call vote, Commissioner Masser.
Aye.
Commissioner Marsh.
Aye.
Commissioner White.
Aye.
Commissioner Claris.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries.
And the final one, to, that would be from the general fund, the one million?
No, from highway tax distribution.
To unorganized, got it.
Yep.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I would move that we transfer one million dollars from the highway tax distribution twenty-one fifty account to the twenty-one twenty unorganized road and bridge account.
You have a motion, do I have a second?
A second.
Have a second. Any discussion? Roll call vote, Commissioner Masser.
Aye.
Commissioner Marsh.
Aye.
Commissioner White.
Aye.
Commissioner Claris.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries.
I, I just wanted to say, if you can see the large amendment for highway tax distribution, it's because they had gotten that House bill, and that was distributed into there. And so that's why they had a considerable difference. The other thing I wanted to ask the commission separately is, so the new fund balance of the general going into twenty twenty-three, you have listed there. And that does include the CDs, like we've spoken about before. Did the commission want to transfer any of that fund balance over to the capital improvements account, or anything like that? Because, you know, we received all of that previous oil and gas, I can't even think here, state aid, oil and gas distribution into the general as opposed to our capital improvements account, like we were supposed to. And so at the end of the year, the commission was supposed to make a decision if they wanted to transfer any money from the general fund into the capital improvements, based on the fund balance at the end of the year.
So I have a question for you. So next month, we're going to be putting out a bid, the HVAC redo here in the courthouse. I know we talked either doing potentially that through ARPA or through the capital improvement project, and I would say if we're going to do that through capital improvement, there would definitely be a need to do that. So what, do you remember?
So I think for that specific project, I, I mean, you can do it either way. I, I think that if you wanted to use some of ARPA, you could. But, you know, I think that it would probably make more sense to just do it out of the capital improvement account. And that balance you can see is at three million six thirty-eight two sixty-three ninety-seven. So that's how much you have in your capital improvement account. But that does include anything that needs to be done to our other building, too. So that's, I mean, that's kind of every building capital improvement account. So if you're thinking that with the change and influx and everything, that it's going to potentially, you know, be, let's say, one point six million for the courthouse upgrade, because I've heard quotes between, you know, so that, that would be all coming out of there, and you would be looking at bringing that account down to about two million dollars. So I guess it's just whatever the commission thinks is sufficient. I just know that we did put in the budget that we would potentially be transferring some of the general fund over to the capital improvements, so.
So my question would be, I hope it's not as high as the rumors, but so would it be appropriate to transfer some number between one and one point five million from the general fund into the capital projects, or, excuse me, capital improvement fund, and then we can deal with it once we know what the actual bids, if we accept?
I, I think you know that these expenses are coming up, and I can show that for when we go in for our audit, that those expenses are coming up. So that does help, because having undesignated funds is where we, you know, they, they question that. So if you guys wanted to move, I think, one million or one point five over, I, I think that that would be appropriate, and we can label out some things that we know are coming up, even in the next five years, beyond what you're talking about with this courthouse thing. Because I know we have to get the, the steps, et cetera, redone, and there's other, there's other stuff. Yeah, and so it, it probably doesn't hurt to have some sort of list, and then at least, you know, some, we're not, we're actually going down and, and not going up in, in that fund, so.
So I would ask the others commissioners, what, you know, we think mid, hopefully less than one five, but so how would you guys want?
I guess I would suggest one point five.
Okay.
As long as there's money left over after the year, it goes back to the general fund or whatever.
No.
Nope.
But we can leave it in there for other capital.
Yep, capital improvement, capital improvement stays.
Needing capital improvement, so I mean, doesn't make, that's, that's my opinion.
We just don't have the revenue that used to go into capital improvements all the time. We don't have that going in there, because it had been built up so much. And now it just goes to the general first, and then you guys decide how much, based on the general balance, you want to transfer over.
I'd rather have extra money in there than have to come back and have to update it or revise it or whatever.
So, Mr. Chairman, I would move that we transfer out of account one thousand, the general fund, one point five million into account number twenty-five hundred for capital improvements, in anticipation of the HVAC remodel.
I'll second.
Okay, you have a motion, do I have a second? Any other discussion? Roll call vote, then, Commissioner Masser.
Aye.
Commissioner Marsh.
Aye.
Commissioner White.
Aye.
Commissioner Claris.
Aye.
And chair votes aye, motion carries. Anything else we need to do?
No, that covered, that covered me.
Is there any other matters we need to discuss, any for adjournments? Not, then I'll look for motion to adjourn. Okay, do you have a second?